It's officially 5:30, so I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Education to order, and I need a motion on item 1A, please.
I will make a motion to approve the September 11th, 2025 board meeting agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item two is our Pledge of Allegiance Moment of Silence.
Red salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Sexton. I am the daughter of James and Rebecca Sexton. I'm a senior in high school. And something that the student ambassadors have recently done is their first club meeting, where we talked about the Paw print and future plans for the school year.
Hello, I'm Emma Albright, I'm the daughter of Teresa and Eric Albright. I'm a senior at Marion County High School. And yesterday we got to interview the page ambassadors at West Marion, and it was a good learning moment for both of us.
Hello, my name is Hannah Conley. I'm the daughter of Sydneya and Greg Conley. I'm a senior at Marion County High School. And as far as our athletics, our athletics have been doing great. In their seasons, uh, girl soccer is succeeding great greatly, with more wins than losses.
I'm Brian Clark, I'm the son of Brian and Delana Clark. Uh, I'm currently a senior at Marion County High School, part of the executive council. And as far as school related, uh, Marion County High School has a new weight locker room, a new setup, weights, all that stuff, and we just have to be waiting for the candy.
And we just want to thank the Board of Education for sponsoring the student ambassador program and supporting us.
Thank you. Moving on to item three. Item three A is public comment, and no one has signed up this evening, so we'll move on to item three B, student recognition.
Yeah, so we, I think we had Ms. Aleah Bradshaw with us today, so I would just thank her to come up and be recognized as our 2026. So, we're very proud of you. Just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, anything you want to say about the, your experience or the program or?
Um, if anyone in here has a daughter who is currently a junior and is planning on participating in D Y W or is on the fence about participating in D Y W, I would heavily encourage them to do so. Um, I've already said that it's the greatest thing that I've gotten to experience my senior year, and it was the best moment that I had. Um, and I'm lucky enough to have my best friend and a fellow participant out of the D Y W with me. I was number 10, she was number 14, so we weren't side by side, but I definitely felt her support the whole night, and I hope that she felt mine. So, it's a great way to get to bond with your fellow peers and all around a great program, um, to represent your community and to be able to have fun all summer. So, if you have any daughters or relatives that are on the fence, please encourage them to do something because it's an amazing opportunity. Thank you.
Again, congratulations.
All right, moving on to item three C is our superintendent, Herb Lee.
A lot of good things to share this evening. We continue to have a fantastic start to our 25, 26 school year. Like we normally do, we'll start out with facilities. Uh, if you've driven by Marion County High School, you see there's quite a large pile of dirt there, and that is going to be from our, uh, high school and Glasscock parking lot. So, uh, it, progress is continuing nicely on that project. And the picture on the left there is our soccer dugout. So, they are now constructed and just awaiting some trim work, metal work on them. So, uh, they look fantastic as well. School nutrition. So, the, just the other day, we had a couple of chefs that worked with the high school cafeteria staff to demonstrate food preparation techniques, uh, really tend to improve our efficiency and our food quality. So, I think, uh, they would share that that was a great experience. Ms. Wheeler, I see you back there. Anything you want to add to that?
It was a great day overall. Both chefs commented on how good hell run, how well-run that kitchen already was, and they had looked over our menus prior to coming in and said that our menus were much more diverse than many high school menus. They will be back in the district focusing on middle schools at some point, and then on the elementarys a little later in the school year.
So, as Mr. Clark mentioned a minute ago, we did have received our new weight equipment, and you can see some pictures there. We are going to have an open house, but it absolutely looks fantastic. So, for those of you who may not be aware, uh, we put new flooring, uh, new paint, new ceiling, uh, I think a new HVAC, uh, renovated the restrooms. There's new flooring in the, uh, foyer of that building. Uh, it is just a really nice facility, and it, uh, it, uh, again, the weights might, or a fantastic addition to that. So, even the smaller weights that you see on there have a night head, they're kind of difficult to see in the picture. But, uh, again, I know our, our football team, they, they couldn't wait to run over there and see it, so I'm not even sure everything was installed before they were trying to peep in there. So, again, pretty proud of it, a fantastic addition. And I will say this also, so that the guys who installed the equipment, they do it all over, and they said it was probably the largest weight room that they've ever been in in the high school facility. So, you know, I sometimes, you know, people may comment about our facilities and such, and, uh, again, just want to share that our facilities are something to be proud of. Continuing on, uh, Marion County High School marching band won first place in the Class 2A competition at Washington County recently, so you can see some pictures there. Congratulations to them. And while we're on the topic of band, uh, our band tower will be installed sometime soon. Uh, that date is pushed back. We're told we're third in the queue, so we're close. But, uh, again, just wanted to update you all on that. Hopefully sometime in October, we'll have a new band tower. So, FFA, you see several students pictured in those photos. So, they recently competed in several state competitions at the fair. Uh, you can see all the different things that they participated in there. So, always, our FFA program is fantastic as well, and we're always very proud of their accomplishments. So, LES fifth graders learned communication and teamwork skills during their STEM lessons involving stacking cups and, uh, using rubber bands and strings. See, the thing that jumps out at me, the look at that smile there on that picture on the left. So, fun activity there. So, LMS, the administration at LMS, uh, started meeting with students for short one-on-one minute meetings to build stronger relationships. And, uh, their goal was to meet with every student by the end of the first quarter. So, Ms. Brady, you want to share anything about your experience with that?
Uh, well, uh, Ms. Erin has seen this idea, it will lead to other schools. That's our school counselor, and that was just a goal that we made for us to take that idea to our school. And, um, if you know me very well, then it's more like, ah. Uh, so, it's more like what I mean, you know, uh, would be. But, you know, and I didn't know really what to expect, other than we had a few questions we asked, and we're about halfway through the student population right now. But it's been really enjoyable, and just there was an A grade student that I already knew, but he started sharing to me that he has an interest in being a computer technician, and then I was able to take that information to Jill Gaddy and Chris Buckman, and be like, hey, if you need somebody working on computers sometimes, I think this guy would be interested. And like, just some connections that I don't think we would have known if we hadn't been sitting down and spending a little bit of time with students. So, they've been very rewarding here, so.
Fantastic. So, Marion County Middle School, first days at Marion Middle focused on hands-on learning. So, again, you can see the focus and attention in those pictures. So, very proud of those students and staff as well. School culture, this is quite the photo, Mr. Mattingly, but Lebanon Elementary School recently had its first undercover dress-up day, where staff members surprised students by coming to school dressed up in surprising ways. So, he did this a little bit last year, the themes, the students, the staff, everybody just really, really enjoys that. Uh, you can see, again, lots of smiling staff members there. So, student leadership, the Marion County Public Schools Student Ambassadors interviewed students at West Marion who were applying to join the West Marion Page Ambassador Program. Preschool, Lebanon Elementary, 13, Glasscock, 20, Calvary Elementary, 35, West Marion, 39, and the Dolly Poppen Imagination Library, 624 active and 1,491 graduation.
Moving on to item three D, Ms. Akers, is our attendance enrollment report.
Okay, thank you. Um, our enrollment as of this morning at Calvary Elementary School, they have 308 students with 35 preschoolers, for a total of 343. Glasscock Elementary has 344 with 12 preschoolers, for a total of 364. Lebanon Elementary, 275, of Lebanon preschoolers makes their total 286. West Marion has 365 students with 39 preschoolers, for a total of 404. Lebanon Middle has 319 students, and Marion County Middle has 283. Marion County High School has 858 students, and QC Spalding, 157, for a total of 3,014. The next slide is a comparison of our enrollment, uh, as of, uh, the last board meeting on August 14th to tonight. Uh, you'll see a difference, um, let's see, in August, it was 2,899, and today's 3,014. Of course, the change is because somebody increased holders. I think enrollment really changes a little bit every week, uh, sometimes daily. But as of today, it was 3,014. Our attendance for the month of August was 96.11. And on the next slide is the year-to-date. Of course, it's 96.11 until we start accumulating months, that will, that number will say, um, as the month, so.
It is green.
It is green, yes. Uh, our next slide, this is our daily attendance. You'll notice it's mostly green, but if you look closely at the four days that are in red, they are in 95% or above. I think two days were like 97%. That's really good attendance. We, uh, just finished our 21st day. We have 152 more days of the school year. As of today, we have 142 students that are on home school. A couple of attendance highlights for the beginning of the year. In 18 of the 21 school days so far, our district, district attendance has reached 95% or higher. The district-wide average for August 2025 was 96.11, and it was up from 95.31 in August of 2024. Five of the seven schools improved their August 2025 attendance compared to last year, and one school achieved 99% or higher attendance today's school year, which is amazing. And for our elementary August attendance challenge, our winner, and it was so, so close, uh, was Glasscock Elementary School, and so they received the trophy for the month of August. So, every M C P S school, like I said, had 95% or better attendance for the month of August. Our attendance day was this week. It was on September 9th, 2025, and, um, Glasscock had the highest at 98.69, but everyone rocked it. So, there were lots of different incentives to come to school that day, and, and it worked. So, great job to all of our principals and staff, families and students for getting to school.
On top, is this, are you kissing the baby? That's what my daughter's doing.
They are so excited about this. I'm excited about it too. I can't wait. Who's providing the baby? I'm sorry, who's providing the baby? Um, uh, my husband's cousin Julie has a baby named Esmeralda. She'll be right here in six months.
Well, that's over here in the Brady house.
Uh, so I know that's really hard to see, but for the month of September, we are going to have a soccer challenge for attendance. And so, for different, there's a scoring system, so if they have 96% or higher attendance, they would earn three points. Uh, if they have daily attendance of 93 to 95%, it's a shot on the go, uh, they would get one point. If they have three or more consecutive days of 97% attendance, that would be a hat-trick bonus for five points. A school that has 98% attendance for the day would get a clean sheet bonus, and that's five points. Uh, if their attendance dips below 90% on a given day, it's a yellow card, they would lose two points. So, as of yesterday, I added everyone's total. Uh, Calvary has 27 points, Glasscock has 36 points, Lebanon Elementary has 12, West Marion has nine, Lebanon Middle School has 13, Marion County Middle School has 11, and M C H S has two. So, the kicker for Glasscock, why they have so many points, is they got a hat-trick. So, they had extra points, or had three consecutive days at 97%. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you. Moving on to item three B is our finance report.
Good evening, taking a look at the August 25 versus 24. Um, of course, uh, the beginning balance is unaudited. Uh, we're going through the audit process right now, so it will change. A couple of things in revenue that we'll point out is, uh, interest is actually down about 23% or about $30,000. Actually, our fund balance is less, and the interest rates have picked down a little bit. Uh, make, or the seat is still up 100% by $23,000. And then the other, if you say it's $26,000, it's down. And I'll point out that this time last year, we received a payment from some, uh, school safety money that expired $24,000 in one high deal. So, really truly, the overall receipts are only down about $25,000 versus the beginning. Uh, going on down to the bottom, expenditures, a few things that we'll continue to look at is getting student services, $2,100 is going to be that way because we had some people in ASR last year, the ASR expired September 30th last year. So, for those first ones, we're going to halve that. Um, $2,600, we've done a lot of athletic facility upgrades. You're going to have more expenses there. And then on the fund transfer, the 400,000 has to be a part of our fiscal rate this year. So, uh, while we're doing, we can kind of identify where all those one-time expenses are. Any questions on that? Uh, the other thing later on is the third leg of the budget cycle, and it's the working budget, I sent you all over this with very much similar, just a few kind of items on that from the tentative budget back in May, May.
All right, moving on to item three F is our annual energy report.
Good evening, uh, my name's Adam Pearce. I'm an engineer with, uh, C M T A. And back in 2015, I think C M T A did our first guaranteed energy savings project at the school district. The, the primary focus of that project was Lebanon Middle School. You did, it makes, yeah. So, to talk about what guaranteed energy savings contracts are, uh, the statutes allow school districts to take on, uh, capital projects using general fund dollars that are guaranteed savings. And, and those savings generally come in the form of reduced utility costs, but also reduced operation maintenance expenses that you may have experiencing with older systems. So, in, um, next slide, please. In, in 2015, that was the, the first of the three projects we're, first of the two projects we're talking about tonight. The third project is just wrapping up, and the results of that aren't reflected in this report. But back in 2015, again, Lebanon Middle School was the primary focus of that project. There were some other miscellaneous things done across the district to save energy. Um, lighting was a part of that, water conservation was a part of that, HVAC controls at, at a couple of buildings was a part of that. And then in 2022, um, you guys used ASR funding to renovate the West Marion and also Glasscock Elementary School. All, not all of the, the equipment at Glasscock was addressed due to, I think, the funding amount that you had in ASR dollars. So, some of that equipment was addressed here recently in, in the, the third phase. So, to, this, this graph here is a representation of what the electrical energy consumption looked like. So, the red line was your, your baseline. So, back in 2015, you were at 5.7 million kilowatt hours per year across all of those buildings. The guarantee, this, this graph is actually the sum of the first two projects, what that guarantee would look like. So, next year, that 4.3 million kilowatt hours will be reduced again because of the third phase. So, again, this is just for the first two phases of that project. So, the, again, the, the red line was the baseline, that's where you were pre-project, and that's, that was a three-year average at that time. So, um, 11, 12, 13, 14 was the baseline for the 2015 timeframe. The, so the guaranteed amount is the 4.3 million kilowatt hours, so that's the number that we're trying to beat. And the actual performance across the entire district for the 24, 25 year was 3.7 million. So, we exceeded that. So, the guaranteed, um, reduction was, what's it, 24%? And the actual was 35%. So, that's, that's money above and beyond the guarantee that's just savings to the, to the district. And this is a similar concept. This is with natural gas. So, your baseline there is 29,000 CCF, a 41% guarantee, an actual reduction of 53%. So, uh, we'd again be the, the, the guaranteed level there on natural gas as well. And this is the, uh, dollars and cents, you know, how it all shook out. So, in 2025, the total savings was 291,000. The guaranteed amount was 253,000. So, about $38,000 excess above and beyond what the guarantee was. So, it's really like you, you got the, the upgrade, it saved you money to pay for it, and also there's money left over that stays over the district. And over the, about, this, this is your 10, so over that 10-year timeframe, it's about $300,000 excess. So, the project's paying for itself and, and leaving some of the district. And that's it, so. Any questions?
Where can we say more? I think that project, you all took care of a lot of the low-hanging fruit, and then with all of the renovations that we've done of late, there's, there's not a ton left, uh, for us to realize, right?
That's right. Your district is, is, you know, the, the state used to have energy managers in place, and that there was all of the reporting for district energy usage was mandated to go to K D E, and they were tracking it. That is no longer happening, but at that time, Marion County, uh, uh, after the first project in 2015, Marion County Public Schools was in the top 10 most energy-efficient school districts in the state. And since that, um, you've only gotten better because you've, you've done more projects that help drive energy costs down.
Scott, at one point where we top out?
We are. Yeah, and, and one time, Lebanon Middle School was 400 on the Energy Star short too.
So, this includes, please, one and two, so there'll be a report next, next year, we'll have the same kind of report for those two projects?
Yes, yes, we will actually, the, the first phase, that was a 20-year, um, bond sale that you, the district sold bonds that are backed by the general fund. So, we'll actually have another 10 years just for the phase one project, and then we'll just continue that on out, um, for, for, you know, the, the rest of the projects. So, I should be here for, I guess, 20 more years. I'll be talking about this.
And Mr. Butler, the reason I do this is if they don't make the guarantee, then they gotta pay us back. So, there's, we, this monitoring verification is what we're doing to show that they're doing what we signed up and, uh, contract for.
And, and we, we're actually looking at your utility bills, um, monthly. We have read-only access to, to the accounts, so we go and download the bills on a monthly basis, put them in a spreadsheet, make sure everything looks good. So, if anything ever looks off, we're going to be investigating why that is. So, um, that is, it is comfort on our part, having that liability that we, um, get to see that, and, you know, react if, if something's kind of going anywhere.
All right, thank you, Ben.
Okay, moving on to item four, I mean, a motion on item 4A, please.
Make a motion to consider approval of short school debt for students, number 02-026, number 03-026, number 04-026, number 05-026, number 06-026, number 07-026, and number 8, 08-026.
Second. All in favor? Uh, need a motion on item 4B?
Well, I'll make a motion to consider approval of the following to be part of the district designated traceable communication system. Amplify, uh, ELA curriculum platform for elementary and middle schools, Common Lit, ELA curriculum platform for high schools, Savas, or Savas, math curriculum platform for middle and high schools, and payer assessment pla, platform.
Second. Any questions here?
Yeah, so, I'm, uh, you know, this is probably going to be something we continue to address monthly based on, you know, items that come up. But many of those curriculums that were just listed are new curriculums. You know, our Common Lit and our Amplify was part of our ELA overhaul that we did at the, toward the end of last school year. And then payer assessment is, uh, something that was, um, as of late as well. So, again, it's just something to be in compliance with some bill 181, and probably likely something to be, uh, an agenda item for months to come.
Other questions? All in favor? Aye. Moving on to item five, I need a motion on item 5A, please.
I'll make, make a motion to consider approval of revised BG 5 for outdoor classrooms project BG number 23-328.
Second. Um, so this is the close-out document, but we have not built the outdoor classroom for Lebanon Elementary School. So, how, will that simply be folded into the project?
This project is for six, and we didn't about include that last one.
Yeah, so the plan would be to include the outdoor classrooms as part of the new facility at Lebanon Elementary, because this was used with ASR funding, which like Scott mentioned, ended last year.
Gotcha. Other questions? All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item 5B? Well, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve a pay-up number 12 to C M T A Energy Solutions in the amount of $70,130.84 for work performed on the Marion County Middle in Glasscock Elementary HVAC placement project BG number 24-4125.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item 5C?
Uh, motion to approve a pay-up number 12 to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of $176,895.41 for work performed on the Glasscock Elementary Masonry for work performed on the Glasscock Elementary Masonry and Window Replacement Project BG number twenty-four dash one-two-two.
Second. Questions? All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item five D.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of school resource officer memorandum of agreement with Marion County Sheriff's Department for twenty-five, twenty-six, pending review of the county attorney.
I'll second. Ms. Brady, you want to explain this?
Yeah, so I just, we're very, very, very proud to, to get this approved and to announce that we are looking to expand our partnership with the Marion County Sheriff's Department to have a county SRO and maybe even potentially expand upon that. But we want to get the first one established. So again, it just hats off to the Sheriff's Department for working with us on this. It's been something that's been in the works for quite a few years and it's absolutely much needed and, you know, you, you can, our schools can never be too safe. So again, we're just very pleased with this and the partnership. And I just look forward to the implementation.
Are we getting one? What, what?
Yeah, so. So we, the contract this evening is for one. There is a potential possibility of adding a second one, but you know, all of this is just recently become available. So it's something that most likely will be looked at, you know, in future.
It's possible they could flunk or stay at one school.
Yeah, so for this one, what we're looking at is they would primarily be housed at Marion Middle, but they would also serve the elementary schools out in the county as well. That's kind of the plan of the item. Yeah, it is huge, yeah.
Other questions? All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item five E?
Make a motion to consider approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six tax collection rate with Marion County Sheriff's Department.
Second. Any other questions?
Yeah, so this is a continuation of our agreement with the sheriff's office. So part of that, we were three percent last year, moving down to two point five percent. Part of the savings realized there will help fund the SRO that you just approved. So again, just thanks for the Marion County Sheriff's Department for working with us.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item five L?
Make a motion to consider approval of fiscal year twenty-six working budget.
I'll second. Scott, you said changes were minimal. Do you want to detail any of it?
Sure. There's just a couple. We budgeted salaries to actual people and there was a couple of changes in that. So we've updated those that were made aware before this was due. And then the other one is we think our seat, our forecast or seats, how much to budget, there's three levels there, we get forecasted and then the final, we're still in the forecast and the final, the tentative should be, last year, kind of the third week of September, we're looking for that, but based off the tax rate assessments and running through the calculations, I think six and a bit more than we're paying. So that revenue is increased, so that kind of almost a wash, what we're adding in the salary budgets and then the revenue increase.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item five G?
Make a motion to consider approval of disposal of technology surplus items. So touch.
Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Need a motion on item five H?
Motion to approve the declared Marion County High School weight room equipment surplus.
Second.
To be clear, it's the old equipment.
It is, the old equipment is.
Other questions, comments? Anyway, that looks great. That's great. I can't wait for the open house. All in favor? Aye. Moving on to item five I is acknowledgement of field trips. So acknowledge, and I need a motion on item six, please.
I would make a motion to, make a motion for student learning support for items A, B, and C.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Moving on to item seven is acknowledgement of personnel actions. So acknowledge, and the gentleman on the end, did you make a motion on item eight?
Ma'am, can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Today is the twenty-fourth year from the disaster, tragedy, or terror that was nine eleven. So I would ask everybody to keep that in your, in your thoughts and especially those people who still have to deal with that every day. So I would ask that. The other thing is, I drove through, come in by Kroger and through, word says buses on. I felt a lot of pride from looking around and seeing what all's going on and then to hear the good news we had tonight. I just think we're in a wonderful place and we can do our part to make the world better by keeping that up and getting along and caring about each other. So with that nonsense, move this meeting into adjournment.